Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 3 as printed in the warrant.
Thank you, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second to approve Article 3 as printed in the warrant. Mr. Andrews, is your article?
So this is the article that pays the moderator, town clerk, selectmen, collector-treasurer, assessors, and highways surveyor, and includes the 2 percent raise that was voted in Article 3.
Thank you, it's the Finance Committee's article, so they recommend? Yes?
Yes, we do.
Thank you, any discussion on Article 3 as presented? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Moving on to Article 4. So, we have a motion to put Article 4 on the table, please? Some moves in the second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second to put Article 4 on the table. I need to speak with the town accountant for one minute, because some of the things we did might have changed some of the articles, so if we could take like a one or two-minute recess?
We could have the recess over, please? The purpose for the recess was so that the town accountant could update and modify correctly the specific line items in Article 4, which is our operating budget, and because of the reclassifications, there are certain specific things that need to be amended, and I'm going to give you those right now, and so when I read them, you won't be surprised. So, to begin with, line item, this is a little bit out of order, but line item 114 is now, it was $68,726, it will now be $70,0259. Line item 63, so we're going backwards. It was $67,809, it is now $69,509.
The second one? It's the new number, $69,509. Line number 95, it was $78,067, it is now $80,0252. And finally, on line item number 106, it was $29,350, it is now be $30,723. And again, those are the differences because of the earlier vote in Article 2. Okay, so can I have a motion on Article 4? Well, it's the Finance Committee's article.
I'll second it.
Okay. So Article 4 is now on the floor. We'll handle Article 4 like we did Article 2, meaning that I will take these section by section, so we don't have to vote on the whole thing at one time. General Government will be the first section, we'll go through every one of these line items. If anyone has a question, a comment, or wants to vote differently, call out "hold" when I get to that line item. Once I have gotten to the end of that section, we will vote on that section, except for the holds, and then we'll go back and vote the holds. If there are no holds, we'll just vote the section. Okay? So, to begin with, we start with line item 1, moderator salary 200, selectmen salary 4,500, town administrator salary 95,434, selectmen clerical 81,365, selectmen expense 3,00925, law 63,000, town hall electricity 18,100, town reports 5,700, audit 25,999, and the footnote A would be at the very end of the, A being from solid waste revenue retained earnings. Or a part of it is, I'm sorry. Yep. Okay. Line item 10, Finance Committee clerical 5,268, Finance Committee expense 3,59, accountant salary 77,64, accountant clerical 50,754, accountant expense 1,0625, data processing 92,81, assessor salary 4,500, assessor appraiser principal salary 74,23, assessor clerical 64,721, assessors' expense 13,615, office machines expense 7,300, treasurer-collector Treasurer clerical is zero, is that right, Mrs. Nolan?
Yeah. Treasurer clerical, collector clerical testing.
Collector clerical is also, line item 23 is also zero. Line item 24, treasurer-collector clerical is now 126,985, it's a combination of 22 and 23, and that's footnote B. Treasurer expense 6,500, collector expense 14,850, treasurer, banking, and payroll expense 7,800, treasurer tax title 5,000, clerk salary 55,97, clerk clerical 38,439, clerk expense 4,370, elections and registration 12,133, wage and personnel clerical 5,268, wage and personnel expense 250, recruitment and employment costs 7,500, conservation commission expense 1,100, planning board expense 2,000, Board of Appeals expense 825, regulatory clerical 73,18, building committee clerical 11,440, building committee expense 450, town buildings custodial 174,885, town buildings expense 32,810, town building preventative maintenance 48,51, line item 44A, capital C-O-A, temporary relocation 15,000. Line item 45, town buildings snow and ice expense 3,000, the total government, general government is 1,406,812. Hearing no holds, all those in favor of general government as presented say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Going on to public safety police, line item 46, police chief salary 119,828, police wages 1,060,282, police training 8,714, police clerical 46,280, police expenses 62,485, police station electricity 24,100, police cruiser maintenance 11,000. Total public safety, 1,332, total public safety police, I'm sorry, 1,332,689. Hearing no holds, all those in favor of public safety police say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Line item, public safety fire, fire chief salary 110,000, fire clerical 42,264, fire wages 907,511, fire training 54,146, fire expenses 45,000, fire station maintenance Fire, line item 59, fire vehicle equipment maintenance 25,565. Line item 60, ambulance supplies 21,561, ambulance building 7,500, total public safety fire 1,230,271. Hearing no holds, all those in favor of public safety fire say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Moving on to public safety, other public safety, line item 62, emergency management expense 1,0545. Line item 63, building inspector wages 69,509. Line item 64, building inspector assistant wages 2,158, 65, building inspector expense Line item 66, sealer of weights and measures salary 2,0620. Line item 67, sealer of weights and measures expense 527. Line item 68, animal control officer salary 18,964 is a footnote C. Line item 69, animal control officer expense 4,616, also a footnote C. Total public safety, other public safety 102,0989. Hearing no holds, all those in favor of public safety other say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Public safety communications, line item 70, communication center wages zero. Line item 71, communication center expense zero. Line item 72, dispatch service 135,000. Total communications 135,000. Hearing no holds, all those in favor of public safety communications say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Going on to schools, line item 73, elementary school 5,422,693. Line item 74, vocational education 244,719. Line item 75, special needs tuition 1,823,001. Line item 76, special needs transportation 415,265. Line item 77, Silver Lake Assessment Operating, 4,456,412.
Hold on that. Hold on that.
We have a hold on line item 77. Line item 78, Silver Lake Assessment Debt 480,982, footnote F. The only hold I have on schools is line item 77, so all those in favor of line items 73 through 78, except for 77, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those pass. Going on to line item 77, Mr. Andrews, you have a hold.
So, the Finance Committee recommended the number of 4,421,412. So it was a $25,000 cut in the assessment to, as to what Silver Lake had passed at their budget. We realize at this time that Kingston has already approved it, and Plimpton has, from what we've been told, going to accept the assessment.
So, are you making, are you making a motion to amend that number that's in the warrant?
I guess I'm just speaking to it right now.
Okay.
So, we've continued to have questions over the sustainability of Silver Lake's budget. We saw this year again that the state provides approximately 1/3 of the total budget of Silver Lake, and their funding increase is basically zero out of the Senate Ways and Means. So that means a larger portion of the assessment, well, the larger portion of their budget is going to continue to be burdened to the three towns in the region. You're seeing the assessment numbers, where we used to be about 60 percent, and the state was 40 percent, we're moving to where the towns are 70 percent, and the state is 30 percent. We don't believe that it is a sustainable economic activity for the town to be able to continue to take a larger portion of the budget. So, I would move the number that I read, 4,421,412.
So we have a motion to amend line item 77 to be 4,421,412. Do I have a second?
Sorry, 431, my math was off.
4,431, 412. So I have a motion in a second to amend line item 77 to 4,431,412. Do we, Finance Committee's recommendation on that, I guess it's your motion, so you recommend it?
That's the number that the Finance Committee recommended.
I'm sorry, say that again?
That is the number that the Finance Committee recommended.
Recommended by the Finance Committee. Any debate on the motion to amend? So what we will do is first vote, yeah, the first vote on the motion to amend. If the motion to amend passes, then we will vote on the new number. If the motion to amend fails, we will go back to the old number. Somebody had their hand up? Yes, ma'am. Remember, holler out "Mr. Moderator," good and loud, so I can hear you.
Mr. Moderator?
At it, girl, thank you.
Paula Hatch, Ten Oak Place, Chair of Silver Lake. We continue to be sensitive to all the three towns' financial positions, and cannot obviously control what the state funds. We've worked particularly closely, I think, with the selectmen and the Finance Committee this year and in the past years, to get to as close to the number the town would like to see us come in at as possible, balanced against the educational needs of the school. We came pretty close this year. I believe money is available in the levy to support this school budget. It is a reasonable budget, given in particular that Kingston has approved it, and it's likely Plimpton will as well. We get the needs of the town, we're going to stay close working with the town. I would ask that you support the budget as written in the town warrant.
So you're speaking against the amendment?
I'm speaking against the amendment.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion on the amended figure, or the motion to amend, I should say? Okay, so, yes, ma'am?
Summersmailing 32 Indian Path Road, I just have a procedural clarification. So, let's hypothetically say that Halifax votes the amended number, and Plimpton votes for the printed number, and Kingston has already voted for the printed number. Then what happens?
Mr. Andrews can answer that.
So, because of the regional town agreement, the town of Halifax would be required to pay the assessment that the other two towns passed, and we would have to, at a special town meeting in the future, vote that number, that the assessed number.
So if two out of the three towns vote the assessed number, and that, the number that's printed is our assessment, Kingston's is a different number, Plimpton's is different, then we pay that number regardless of what we vote tonight. Yes, ma'am?
Marie Cody, 46 McClelland Road, so currently only Kingston has approved that assessment number, and Plimpton hasn't yet?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Andrews?
The town meeting in Plimpton has not yet acted, so we are the second to act, but we have been told that Plimpton Finance Committee and Selectmen are going to, are recommending the assessed number coming out.
So if we amended this tonight, that would be us saying no, so then it would be Kingston yes, and us no.
That would be one out of three votes, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yes, ma'am, in the back.
Kimberly King, 441 Twin Lakes Drive. My question is, our surrounding communities and school districts have received large increases per pupil? Am I understanding correctly that our district has not received that?
Say that question again, please.
Our surrounding communities, over the past two years, have had an increase per pupil with their school districts. Am I understanding correctly that the Silver Lake regional school district hasn't received an increase per pupil?
You want to know if our population has gone down?
No. I want to know if they've had an increase in their funding per pupil.
Funding per pupil. Okay, if you'll have a seat, I'll try to get an answer. Mr. Andrews?
So I can answer from the state, from the Chapter 70 side, we have received what all the other communities have received, there's nothing different about our community.
Okay, so we're at the $32 per head, like Whitman Hansen just received that.
You have to address the moderator with a question, please, thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Moderator, so my question is, are we at the 32 per head, per pupil?
Does someone have an answer for that? Mr. Seeling? If you have a seat, please, thank you.
Obviously, in terms of the legislative budget at the State House, they're still figuring things out themselves. The House budget gave a minimum of $25 per student for Chapter 78. The Senate version, which just came out a few days ago, is a $30 increase in gross Chapter 78. Where we're seeing problems, and it depends on the school district, is that we're all losing money in various degrees to charter schools. And we're seeing a larger percentage of our Chapter 70 money being siphoned off to charter schools in the area. It's not as bad as in some school districts, for instance, the city of Boston, the vast majority of Chapter 78 that they receive actually ends up in charter schools. We're not there by any stretch of the imagination yet, but it is a worsening condition. So even though the gross amount of Chapter 78 that we're receiving matches on a per-student basis, many of the school districts in the area, what we're seeing is that an increase in the money that's going to the charter schools, which negates some of the increase in the gross amount.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, debate on the amended, amendment to Article 77? Just to refresh everyone's memory, the Finance Committee has moved to amend the figure. Our first vote will be on whether or not to approve that amendment. Everyone understand? All those in favor of amending the figure say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The amendment fails. We now move to the original figure of 4,456,412. Any discussion on that number, the original number? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of the amount of 4,456,412 for line item 77 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Going on to Public Works Highway, line item 79, highway surveyor salary 73,740. Line item 80, highway wages 300,996. Line item 81, highway clerical 41,945. Highway expense, line item 82, 6,221. Line item 83, highway barn maintenance 10,100. Line item 84, highway equipment 48,500. Line item 85, highway town road 74,355. Line item 86, highway snow and ice 177,509. Line item 87, street lights 27,300. Line item 88, traffic lights 5,500. Line item 89, tree warden salary $1. Line item 90, tree maintenance 3,500. Line item 91, insect and pest control $1. Total Public Works Highway 769,668. I didn't hear any holds on any of those line items. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Going on to Public Works Cemetery, starting at line item 92, cemetery superintendent salary 11,48. Line items 93, cemetery wages 71,345. Line item 94, cemetery supplies and equipment 6,020. Total Public Works Cemetery 88,413. I didn't hear any holds. All those line items 80, 92 through 94, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Going on to Public Works Water, line item 95, water superintendent salary 80,252. Line item 96, water wages 189,188. Line item 97, water clerical 39,986. Line item 98, water supply 182,100. Line item 99, water insurance 60,579. Line item 100, water retirement 19,000. Line item 101, water legal fees 1,500. Line item 102, water meters 25,000. Line item 103, water, gas, and oil 13,750. Line item 104, water vehicles 9,000. Line item 105, water tower and wells maintenance 100,000. Total Public Works Water 718,170, footnote G. I didn't hear any holds on any of those line items. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Going on to Public Works Solid Waste, line item 106, recycling office clerical 30,723. Line item 107, recycling office expense 3,190. Line item 108, recycling center wages 71,948. Line item 109, recycling center expenses 28,000. Line item 110, hazardous waste collection 12,335. Line item 111, trash collection disposal 201,240. Total Public Works Solid Waste 346,063, footnote H. I didn't hear any holds. All those in favor of Public Works Solid Waste say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Going on to Health and Human Services, line item 112, Board of Health Clerical 42,822. Line item 113, Board of Health Expense 7,873. Line item 114, Board of Health Inspectors 70,259. Line item 115, Board of Health Nursing Services 7,000. Line item 116, Board of Health Landfill Engineering 15,233. Line item 117, Inspector of Animals 3,109. Line item 118, Council on Waging, Council on Aging Wages 180,469. Line item 119, Council on Aging Expenses 8,880. Line item 120, Pope's Tavern Electricity 3,000. Line item 121, Veterans Agent Salary 14,973. Line item 122, Veteran Agent Expense 1,300. Line item 123, Veterans Benefits 195,700. Line item 124, Housing Authority $1. Line item 125, ADA Expense $1. Total Health and Human Services 549,87. I didn't hear any holds. All those in favor of Health and Human Services say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Going on to Culture and Recreation, Library Director Salary 63,858.
Diane just pointed out when you read the sum, it didn't include the difference. I don't know if it makes a difference. It happened on the different ones.
Yeah, okay.
I don't think, it doesn't really make a difference, it's just the sum.
The Finance Committee pointed out that some of the calculations on the totals might not be accurate. We don't vote the total anyway, that's really an informational thing, so that's my mistake, I should have checked that before. I won't add, I do have the total on this next one as corrected, but, so I don't think it changes the vote, it just means that the totals have to be added up a little bit differently on those earlier ones. Going back to Culture and Recreation, line item 126, Library Director of Salary 63,858. Library wages 172,302. Library expense 87,441,29. Youth and Recreation Wages 16,450. Line 130, Youth and Recreation Expense 13,216. Line item 131, Youth and Recreation Director 17,391. Line item 132, Parks Wages 100. Line item 133, Parks Expenses 450. Line item 134, Cable Television 225,000, with a footnote to "aye." Line item 135, Patriotic Celebrations 400. Line item 136, Historical Commission 2499. Line item 137, Historic District Commission 446. Line item 138, Holidays in Halifax 3,395. Line item 139, Halifax Fireworks 3,200. Line item 140, Beautification Committee Expense 500. Line item 141, Music Rights 350. Line item 142, Agricultural Committee Zero. Line item 143, Website Committee Line Item 143, Website Committee Expense, $3,050. And this is a correct number. Is that right, Mrs. Nolan?
Yes.
So the total in this one is 610,047. Again, the total numbers are just informational. It's what we vote on the line items that's important. Any discussion on Culture and Recreation, line items 126 through 143? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Going on to Debt Service. Line Item 144, Debt Water Extension Project, $78,600 with a footnote to J. Line Item 145, Debt Police Station, zero footnote to K. Line Item 146, Debt Water Pollution Abatement Trust, $10,400 with a footnote to L. Line Item 147, Debt Water Pollution Abatement Trust II, $10,000 with a footnote to M. Line Item 148, Debt Landfill Capping, $106,538. Footnotes to N and O. Line Item 149, Debt Halifax Elementary School Roof and Repairs, $414,159 with a footnote to P. Line Item 150, Debt Halifax Elementary School Fire Suppression, zero. Line Item 151, Debt Council on Aging Building Project, zero. Line Item 152, Interest on Temporary Loans, $5,000. The total debt, I think, is corrected on this, $624,697. Hearing no holds, all those in favor of Line Items 144 through 152, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Going on to Fixed Costs. Line Item 153, Plymouth County Retirement, $1,145,686. Footnote to Q. Line Item 154, Group Insurance Town Share, $974,778. Line Item 155, Medicare Town Share, $122,167. Line Item 156, Insurance, $250,000. Line Item 157, OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits, $35,000. Footnote to R. Line Item 154, Telephone, $29,200. Line Item 159, Gas and Oil, All Departments, $110,000. Line Item 160, Heating All Buildings, $62,500. Again, we have a informational number.
Just a question through you to the-
Which one?
The Medicare Town Share. Is that correct? Did it change this in the-
What line are you on?
Line 155, the Medicare Town Share.
And it's just an informational question as to the number?
Is the number correct?
Is, Mrs. Nolan? 122, 167. Line Item 155-
It's tested with 2% and that would accept the classification. So we amend 10 to 100 and a special family.
So the number's correct? That's the number we want?
2%.
Okay. So I don't have any holds on fixed costs, Line Item 153 through 160. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. That ends Article 4. We now go into the lottery for the rest of the town meeting, and the next number will be-
18.
18?
18.
Okay, so the next article will be Article 18, proposed by the Highway Surveyor, Mr. Mr. Hayward? Mr. Hayward, Highway Surveyor.
(laughing).
I know, it was sort of monotonous listening to that last one. We're at Article 18.
I move Article 18 as printed with the change of, it's a not one hydraulic lift, it is a four-post heavy truck lift, one pneumatic jack, and four jack stands.
So your motion is to transfer from undesignated fund balance to sum of $29,000, and you're going to purchase again? Would you just list them for us? It's making a little bit of a change to what's printed.
The four lift, a four-post heavy-duty truck lift, one pneumatic jack, and four jack stands.
Okay. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to transfer from undesignated fund balance to sum of $29,000 for purchase of the equipment that Highway Surveyor asked for. Can you explain your article?
The four-post lift failed inspection on safety and a few other reasons. It, one of the safety is the bolt on one of the posts actually snapped when he was testing it, so it's leaning into the left. We don't have any pneumatic jacks, and we don't have any jack stands.
Okay. Thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation, Article 18, has moved.
The Finance Committee recommends it's moved.
The Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 18 as proposed by the Highway Surveyor? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
22.
Line Item number, Article number 22.
Mr. Moderator?
Mrs. Roy.
I move that the town vote to transfer from Wetlands Fund the sum of $7,500 for additional hours for the Conservation Commission Secretary and for wetland protection work and review.
We have a motion and a second. Mrs. Roy, it's your motion.
Many years ago, we eliminated the conservation agent position and increased hours for clerical support for our Conservation Commission. We help fund this position through conservation fees, and the balance is from general funds. And this article does fund the general funds.
Okay. Finance Committee's recommendation, Article 22.
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion, Article 22. Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
61.
Mr. Moderator?
Mrs. Roy.
I move that we pass over Article 61.
Okay, do we have a second? So the motion is to pass over, meaning we'll take no action on Article 61, Mrs. Roy.
Mr. Moderator, paperwork was not completed to the satisfaction of the town in order to accept this road.
Okay. Finance Committee's recommendation, passing over.
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 61? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
52.
Line Item, Article number 52. Proposed by the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator?
Mrs. Roy.
I move Article 52 as printed.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for Article 52 as printed. Mrs. Roy, it's your article.
This article, the state law had told the towns that they collect 2%, and we adopted the 2% tax on marijuana, and the Attorney General increased that to 3%, so we are adopting the additional 1%.
So we're now up to 3%? Okay. A Finance Committee's recommendation on Article 52.
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 52? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
12.
Article 12 is proposed by the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the fund of $2,080 to fund the provisions of the collected bargaining agreement for fiscal 2019 between the Fire Chief, Jason Vaveros, and the Town of Halifax.
Second. We have a motion and a second on Article 12. Mrs. Roy.
This article will fund a 2% raise for the Fire Chief.
Okay. Finance Committee's recommendation, Article 12.
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 12? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
13.
Article 13. Board of Selectmen. Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance to sum of $150 for the use of trustees for the county corporate extensive service and authorize the selectmen to appoint a town director within 15 days as provided in revised Chapter 128, Section 41. Mass General Laws.
We have a second? Yep, we have a motion and a second on Article 13. Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Moderator, this is an annual motion that we bring forward to help out for the county extension service, which 4-H and other activities, youth are involved in.
Okay. Finance Committee's recommendation, Article 13.
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion, Article 13? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
57.
57 is proposed by the-
Mr. Moderator, it's proposed by the Board of Selectmen, I believe.
Proposed by the Board of Selectmen, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I move to this article as printed.
Okay, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Mrs. Roy, do you want to speak?
Charlie Seelick is going to speak on behalf of the board.
What this article attempts to do is set up a system to allow for outdoor amusements such as Mudfest in the agricultural residential districts of the town. As you note in the language of the proposal, there are a number of stipulations that greatly regulate what can and cannot be done, how many days in a year a particular parcel of land can be used for such outdoor entertainment and such. We've, the Board of Selectmen has proposed this change in the bylaw, so, for several reasons, one of which is that we have a current lawsuit involving Mudfest. The parties involved in that have looked at the language of this proposed bylaw and feel that this is a reasonable compromise, so that if was approved at the town meeting, then the Mudfest organization would file through and go through the special permitting processes outlined in the bylaw, and the lawsuit would be resolved to the benefit of both parties. I'm happy to ask more, answer more specific questions, but that's the basic outline.
Okay. We need a Planning Board recommendation. Somebody here from the Planning Board? Mr. Andrews was here before. There was a hearing held, is that correct?
He's there.
Oh, I'm sorry, here he is. Mr. Andrews, recommendation on Article 57.
I believe the Planning Board took a vote on that and did not recommend that.
Did not recommend it.
Is that right? For, for the outdoor? It passed, recommended by the Planning Board.
Excellent. Memorandum does say you recommended it. So Planning Board does recommend Article 57. Finance Committee's recommendation on Article 57.
The Finance Committee had a few questions. They wanted to know if there's any chance that there'd be any variances issued to this by the zoning board. Can any of the number of requirements in this be changed?
They be, they can be changed. The challenge, however, is for any permit holder to meet the stipulations that are required as part of a variance, and it's extremely unlikely that, given the state statute and what is required, in fact, for a variance, that any permit holder or permit applicant would be able to meet those stipulations and get a variance.
Okay. You still need a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 57 as presented? Yes, sir, in the back?
Dan Basari, 175 Eldana. Mr. Moderator, I'm very concerned about this article. I think without a doubt, this is the most important thing we're going to be voting on in this town meeting. This article is going to fundamentally change the complexion and the tenor of our town. Right now, they're asking for two days. Last year, it was unlimited. So it was removed from the vote, and I appreciate what they're trying to do here and to control the process. But there's nothing to stop in the future either the state or other people in the town to ask for more days if there's not enough opposition to it. The lawsuit that's happening right now is the process, and the process is not broken. This is what I've been trying to relate to people. We're kind of circumventing the process here. What if the Mudfest, I guess, and I can be corrected on this, I guess the relief seeked in the lawsuit is to see if the Mudfest is an agricultural event, because that's the contention here. Is it commercial or is it agricultural? Well, if they win, what we're doing here tonight, in reality, has nothing to do with the Mudfest. You would be voting away your property protections, your property rights, to say that, no, we are not going to allow commercial events of that magnitude and that size in our residential zones. Now remember, this is not academic. We became this close last year to having a multi-day, I think it was 5,000 people a day, event in another venue in town, not where the Mudfest is held, but by the same promoter. So we have to, if you're coming here, if people are coming here, Mr. Moderator, thinking that they're just voting for the Mudfest, it couldn't be further from the truth. We are voting about our property rights here. And I really feel in the long term, if, Mr. Moderator, if people looked at the inside cover of the article, the questions-
Is that Finance Committee's report that you're referring to?
No. The questions that we're to ask ourselves on the inside cover. I think maybe all but two questions here get a yes in my mind. This, again, and this is the longest I had to sit and ever talk. So I really don't think this is going to provide us any long-term protection, and I really hope people think long and hard about this when they vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Seelick, if you could just clarify one point. This is a zoning article. It's not specific to any one event, is that right? So as the previous speaker points out, this article, although an event may have inspired it, it's a zoning change, and it would be applicable to anything that would apply. Is that right?
Yes, it would. It's not just one event, it's not just one property, it's any property that meets the stipulations under the proposal that is in the agricultural residential zone. I understand the previous speaker's objections to it. I recognize that his concerns, because they're, you know, everybody, not everybody, but some people live or live close by to properties that might qualify for this, but it's a special permitting process. The applicant must go to the Zoning Board of Appeals and obtain a special permit that requires a supermajority of the ZBA. In addition, in talking with the building inspector and zoning enforcement officer, the proposal would have to go through additional site plan review with the planning board and have that approved. In terms of, well, somebody could come back and ask for more days. It's through this body that a change in the bylaw, right now, the proposal is for a maximum of two days for any one parcel. If a party or property owner or somebody else wanted to come back to town meeting and say, "I want to change the bylaw two years from now, five years from now, so that I can have five days or 10 days of events on that property," it comes back to you, the townspeople, to make that decision, whether you want to change the bylaw. My other concern is, as much as I understand it's more of a general nature rather than concerning one specific event, we do have the lawsuit before us. The case, if, in my mind, is that if the Mudfest promoter wins, and I'm not objecting to Mudfest, I think it's a wonderful event, we get, we've seen very few problems, and, you know, they work very well with our public safety departments, they've worked well with the Board of Selectmen. But my concern is, if the, courts rule that Mudfest, which is, I think most people understand what it is, is an agriculture- understand what it is, is an agricultural event, then what isn't? Is a three-day concert or full-week concert on a farm. But it's on a farm, is that an agricultural event? If Mudfest is, it's probably no closer to, in my mind, to an agricultural event than Mudfest, but certainly, if Mudfest is, there's very little in my mind that isn't an agricultural event. And we're trying to avoid opening the floodgates to all types of events because we wouldn't have any way of stopping it, given the decision if it's in favor of Mudfest.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, in the back.
My name is Amy Troop, and I'm Ten Hillside Avenue. My concern is that sixty-one A agricultural outlines, that farmers have the right to supplement their income with events, and I don't think that it's really of anybody's judgment on whether Mudfest is agricultural or anything like that, I'm just using that as an example at this point since it's the one on the table. I definitely think, it makes my body shiver to think that our freedoms would be taken away that, that immensely.
Are you speaking in favor or against of Article fifty-seven?
Against it.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on? Mr. An, Ms. Andrews, yes.
Gordon Andrews, six eighty-eight Plymouth Street. Mr. Moderator, through you, the article was proposed by the Selectmen, they are members of the town meeting. Mr. Seelig has spoken for them and has given his opinions, but based on the fact that this body is the one that comes up with the bylaws, can we hear from the Selectmen what their thoughts are on this, as they are members?
It's up to them. Mr. Milias, do you want to respond to that?
Certainly. I can, speaking for myself at this point, I have not been in favor of this particular change. However, there is a huge argument to be made that Mr. Seelig has presented, that we could lose control from a court case. I'm concerned because the court has been reluctant to make a ruling until we finished with this town meeting, and that's why we haven't had a judgment from the court, which kind of lends me, lets me to believe that we may be in some jeopardy here. As, on whole, I don't think these events belong in an AR district. However, based on the provisions that are provided in the article, we thought, at least I thought, that this was worthy of coming before this body for some contemplation. I think there are protections in here. Of course, as always, when you have a special permit, you have to rely on that special permit granting authority to do the right thing, to take and make considerate decisions of, for instance, neighbors. People will have an opportunity to oppose a particular event, it is a dangerous slope, I don't disagree, but I think on whole, I think this is the way to go, even though I'm actually personally opposed to it, but from the protections that it provides, I believe this is the right decision.
Any other comments or discussion on Article fifty-seven, oh, Mr. Seelig, go ahead.
I understand that Halifax is very much, has a philosophy of being able to do what you want on your own property without restrictions. However, that, of course, carries over in that, as much as we would wish all our neighbors to be thoughtful in terms of what they allow on their properties, we have permitting processes so that you, as an abutter, you as a neighbor, have a right to participate in that decision-making process of whether something's going to be allowed. If you want to choose the philosophy of anything goes, including whatever commercial entertainment you will have to have on a property next to your own, then by all means, let's go down that road. But, as much as I understand that many of you want the right to use your property the way you want to, you may be a little bit disturbed if your neighbor goes off and does something that you don't want to have happen, but nevertheless, you had, gave that person every right to do so.
Amy Troop again, I have a question to ask, what protections it may offer us as citizens, and also, isn't there zoning laws? Like, we can't just have, you know, an adult, adult movie theater in our, in our residence, it's null and void, but, so, those questions.
Do you want to know what protections are in this particular zoning change?
And don't we have zoning laws to protect us? And we also already have to go to get permits to have bands at our house, so I don't see how this is-
I'll find out for you. Mr. Seelig, can you put that together?
Well, that's the whole point of having zoning, is that you go through and you make it, the town makes the decisions about what you allow by right, what you won't allow, and what you allow through the special permitting process. An applicant has to go to the ZBA, there is a public hearing process, abutters within three hundred feet are notified, the ZBA has to vote by a supermajority, by at least getting four votes affirmative, to approve a special permit. As you notice in, on page thirty, starting on page thirty-eight, you'll see there are a number of restrictions in, as part of this proposed bylaw. For instance, a minimum acreage size, requirements for parking, toilets, storage, infrastructure, no more than the two days per calendar year, no more than ten hours for, on any particular day. The ZBA can set maximum noise levels. The special permit holder has to, at its own expense, provide for public safety personnel and work with both the police chief and fire chief for the same. Same is true for sanitary facilities with the Board of Health. And also, surety bond through the town, and no alcohol would be allowed as part of the event during the hours of the event. So, there are numerous restrictions that would be part of any bylaw. In terms of, for instance, people mentioned various types, well, aren't there restrictions on various types of events? We do. We, for instance, adult entertainment, there's a separate listing in the bylaw specifically for adult entertainment, but we don't have one for entertainment that we don't consider to be adult entertainment. So, for instance, a music festival on a farm might very well be considered to be an agricultural use, because it's on a farm, it helps support the farm's existence. Given the court case, and if it's ruled in favor of Mudfest, I see very little protection for the town to prevent a agricultural zoned land, and most of the town is agricultural residential, from saying, fine, I'm going to have this entertainment event on that site, it's permitted, I don't have to go through the special permitting process. Now, there may be other things, they still probably, for instance, need to have a certain number of toilets and things like that, but they'll be allowed to have the event, and will be very difficult to control the bounds of that event.
To address the earlier question, this, Article fifty-seven, is a proposed change to our current zoning bylaw. So if you look in the Halifax Code, and it's referenced at Chapter one sixty-seven, that is the overall zoning bylaw. This particular article amends and changes the bylaw for the issues that are raised in it. Yeah. Uh-